All right, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, November 27th. If we could have a roll call, please ma'am, to establish quorum.
Terry McLoughlin?
I am here.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Kristy Kendrick?
Here.
We have five.
All right, please have the stand and-- Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a motion to approve the agenda, so moved.
Second.
You got additions, corrections? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add a discussion of the event happening in December on Spring Street, please.
Second.
Okay. If not, get a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Allo.
Second.
All in favor, sing five by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Get a motion to approve the minutes.
Allo.
Any corrections, additions? All those in favor of the minutes as submitted, sing five by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes. I don't remember who it was.
Andrew Terry, who is the second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Commission and planning reports, we got a vacancy on the planning, position four. Also have a vacancy on the CA PC and got a position on the HDC that's vacant. We also have an application, that's reapplication from Steve Hollifield, who's already on the commission. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and reapprove Steve Hollifield.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, sing five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, I think we have somebody from cemetery? Give us a little report, update.
Hi, I'm Susan Tharp, chairperson of the City Cemetery Commission. We've had a fun year, a little bit of a transition in the middle of it, but we've accomplished several things. We are continuing to get our application in for historical registry, National Historical Registry. We received a grant that was actually needed to write the application for the grant, or for the, not for the grant, but for the application to determine our historicals, that we are a historical cemetery and that all of our numbers are in the right spot. We've continued work with our database information. We have completed a small database now that is functional for our members to access, or for the commission members to access. There's no access to that publicly yet. The database is being used to cross-reference several old documents and things in the vault and we're using it to determine available spaces. We're also using it, cross-referencing and making sure that there's not any inconsistencies in paperwork and if there is, we're correcting those. We're also out in the cemetery actually physically marking now the unused and unoccupied areas so that makes it more friendly to the public because not everybody wants to talk about that with somebody and walk through the cemetery so they can actually walk out there now and they'll find just red bricks in the ground where there's actually spaces available. We've actually also, in amongst doing that, it's kind of started a study of a block by block basis. So we're taking one block at a time, cross-referencing it, updating our database with it, making sure that what it's, Joe Blow is where he's supposed to be physically in the ground. You'd be surprised, there are a few of those that are not in the right spot. We've established several cremation areas now. Burials have changed a lot, people are, the demands for burials and the types of burials are changing, so we've established a place for cremations now. We are working on a cremane garden, but not, we haven't picked out that spot yet. We've installed signage for pet waste and pet waste stations now, so lots of people walk their dogs out there, so that we've got good signage up now and got that available for them. And that was through a donation, we were really excited, ecstatic to get that. We've used 32 yards, which is basically two large dump trucks of topsoil. Our groundskeeper was able to go through and fill several of the sunken graves, get things leveled up, clean off new graves, get grass established on new graves, so we're not looking at mounds of rocks out there hardly anymore. He's very good at staying on top of that. We had three or four, I can't remember off the top of my head, large, huge, big pine trees that had died. We've gotten those removed, so they're not going to fall on headstones and break them now. And just basic continual daily operation of groundskeeping, plot sales, bookkeeping and answering phone calls. Lots of people wanting to know where Grandma's at. Our goals for next year, a little bit lofty, one of our main goals is to transfer our superintendent duties to our groundskeeper. And in doing that, we're going to increase the groundskeeper's hours to 40 hours a week with a small pay increase to compensate for the additional duties, which is basically to put him on call for 24/7 because you never know when the public's going to call you with a question. This is a very, the superintendent duties are currently on the chairperson and when the chairperson works several full-time jobs and they call you and say, "Oh, by the way, we're having a burial at this time," it's kind of a big inconvenience to drop what you're doing in your businesses and have to go out there and attend an opening of a grave site. And so, that's a consistent problem and I think that's made it very difficult for a lot of superintendents on this commission to do and live their regular life. So, we're looking to get that switched over to the groundskeeper, let him answer phone calls, he's out there already, he can go out and look at things, I mean, he's on-site, he's ready to go, he's there. The other thing is, is this will better enable your commission members to focus on tasks that are not daily operational duties, to get them more looking in, looking ahead into getting more plot sales, determining what your expansion capabilities are in the cemetery. When you have to deal with daily stuff, it kind of, you don't have time to fundraise and think of ideas. So, we're trying to free up the commissioners to be able to do that. We want to finish the historical registry process. After that process is finished, we'll receive, we'll be able to apply for grants so that we can repair the front fence, do basic repairs, add fence, lots of things that they'll grant us money to kind of help us do out there, columbariums and fun stuff. Yeah, that's fun. We also are wanting to produce a viability study this year that would show a better timeline so that we can budget on what is available out there. As of now, there's no way to tell, we can't say there's 550 grave sites left out there and we have this much money out of those sites, so we can use that money to go and open up more land. We don't have any capability of that, and so we want to finish this viability study, which is lots of man-hours that are volunteer hours too, so the groundskeeper's been excellent about helping us with that too. And of course, continuing to cross-reference the old paperwork. We want to expand the database, we want to be able to scan in all the old deeds, so all you got to do is the public can go in and click on somebody's name and it'll show the deed, the plot where they're at. If we happen to have it, sometimes there's old obituaries, we'll scan that in with them. We want to be able to tag a photo on, of the headstone and possibly do some aerial maps to where people can kind of look from the air and see where people are at in the cemetery. And then, of course, just our basic, we just need to provide adequate tools, supplies and equipment to maintain the grounds and we want to keep this in a timely and a cost prohibitive manner. You have to realize that the demand on the groundskeeper will constantly increase. Every time you set a headstone, every time you dig a grave, every time you plant a flower or you let somebody plant something or put up a border around their graves out there, that all increases the time and effort it takes for your groundskeeper to take care of that. And so, it's not, it's not an easy position. And so, the groundskeeper is a vital, vital part of the cemetery and I don't know if anybody's gotten to go out and look at the cemetery lately, but it is amazing. So, basically, we do want to put in a request that the council would vote that we move our superintendent duties and add them to the groundskeeper duties and make a superintendent groundskeeper position, increases hours to 40 hours a week to be established with a maximum budget increase of $9,069.20.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on that too. I know it's not an agenda, do we need to add, as, I don't think we need to vote on them changing the groundskeeper, the hours, all that around, I think that's a cemetery thing, but the budget, the potential increase in the budget, do we put that on the next agenda?
We should see where, let me check and see where we've got it in our budget.
Thank you.
And we'll do the budget workshop.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Ray, building inspector, update.
Of course, I'm Bobby Ray, the building inspector. As far as this past year, it's kind of been a touch-and-go situation on a lot of different issues. We're, as far as contractors, this is the time of year when we send out new contractor lists, we're actually up 70-something contractors on the mail-out for this year. I have started reassessing some of our sidewalks, both in residential and commercial areas, determining the actual linear footage of each property and will be, after the first year, we'll be contacting these people because this is kind of our down type of the season about making their sidewalk repairs. I did meet, at the last HDC meeting, something that I have been trying to do for the last probably two to three years, was actually get fines assessed to certain ordinances inside the municipal codebook. It came, in my opinion, I felt it was not right for me to actually set the fines. So my first step is to, and I have already discussed it with HDC, which they will be discussing with Mr. Weaver, we're going to set fines, it shouldn't have to be done by ordinance, because the ordinance actually states a minimum certain charge and a maximum certain charge. I did finally get in our new database, it switched over on the enforcement's part that actually has the Clean City slash Demo by neglect ordinance, which I have not been able to do that. It's all, everything's been under unsanitary conditions or unsightly conditions. This year so far, we have had 19 written warnings, we haven't had any actual written citations. Of the 19, 10 have been resolved. Nine of them are actually fall under the Demo by neglect or the Clean City ordinance and these are ones of houses that need major repairs. And I am currently working with those people to get contractors in there and get some idea of what it's going to cost to make these repairs. While that being said, I have found several, my average is probably going to say at least eight other addresses that are going to be added to that list. The hard part being is a lot of these people don't live here. The people that do live here, that have the houses, are doing the best they can and I'm working with them to try to get some of this stuff done. The problem I'm having is homeowners or property owners that do not live here. My next step, especially one of my major goals for next year, is on the Demo by neglect or severe minimum maintenance. Some way that we can, and it may be something that y'all would have to do as far as setting aside a certain line item or a certain account just for the Demo by neglect, because a lot of these people that I'm, have gotten a hold of, I'm not hearing anything back from them. So, in the ordinance, it says that the city would come in and do the repairs and they would take bids to do that. In order to do that, I feel, and I could be wrong, that we need to set aside money in just an account for the Demo by neglect. That would be something for y'all to discuss. And as far as, I've been comparing over the last few years on permits, and I know this sounds funny or kind of off the mark because y'all were discussing budget and everything earlier, we're actually down in permits. Money-wise, we're up. I don't know how that's, how that's come to be, but we are way up, and this doesn't show on the permit side of it, certificate of occupancies for new businesses. We are up almost 80 certificate of occupancies this year. And this time of year is usually the slow time of year for certificate of occupancies and we are getting them left and right. We have new businesses moving in, we have old businesses relocating. And I hope it continues because we've still got a lot, you know, several empty stores, empty, you know, restaurants, hotels, that I would really like to see come up next year. Is there any questions or anything?
Just a general comment, you know?
Okay.
That all we have is this city to promote and what the work you do is important for our city and I appreciate it.
I'm trying and I will tell you all this, one thing I did start doing, of course you all know that, I'm also a reserve officer.
Yeah.
So, I come in and work a lot of weekends, cover for people, cover events. I've actually found, it's kind of dropped off, I had a lot of contractors coming in from out of town. Friday nights, working all night Friday night into Saturday morning, or coming in late Saturday night, working into Sunday morning. I've actually, while on regular patrol, have actually six in the last two and a half months.
Wow.
And essentially, they were either getting a citation or they came in and got everything current. So, you know, everybody's like, "Well, which one are you?" Well, actually, I try to do both jobs at the same time.
Yeah.
But, just letting you know, I'm trying.
I understand, thank you.
Uh-huh. Yes.
So, the funds that you're asking for, for the Demo by neglect, that would be for boarding, houses, demolish?
That essentially would be to cover, because we'd have to take bids according to the ordinance. And it's going to be a case-by-case basis, but we have, we have no account set aside right now as it is, because that account essentially would be for the Clean City ordinance, which was if someone doesn't live here and they refuse to mow their yard or they refuse to come and paint their house or whatever, the city would have to take bids to do that, but we have nothing set aside.
So, if the funds would be to do that work?
Just for the Clean City ordinance and Demo by neglect.
Okay, okay.
Actually, Demo, the Demo part of it is not that big a problem because most of these people figure out real quick that it's going to cost more to fix it than what it's worth, even if it's a contributing and that's something that I try to pound into some of these people's heads. You bought this historic house, it's essentially a very contributing piece of a property and it needs to be taken care of whether you live here or not. And I've had a few say, "Well, we would like to go in front of HDC by Demo by neglect." And I'm, I just tell them, because it's a contributing property, I doubt that's going to happen. And by this, if they don't want to do it and they just want to sit there and let it continue to deteriorate, then we can go in, do it, and then, like I said, according to the ordinance, whether it's done by lien or whatever, but that would be for y'all to set aside, you know, whatever amount y'all would agree on and that, like I said, that's all that would be used for.
And, and once it was used, then we would lien the houses?
Yes.
To repay ourselves?
My only problem with that is if you, if you had a family that bought or had the place and you put a lien across, against it, well, when they passed, they put it in a family trust. I'm actually working on an issue like that right now. It was originally, the letter went out to the owner, the owner passed, but it, the house was put in a family trust before he passed. So now, I'm having to deal with the people that are in the trust.
Right, following it.
Okay? And they, for example, they are one of them that was like, "No, we want to fix it up." Well, now that they've started trying to fix it up, they're finding out it's costing them way more to fix this house up than what they could turn around soon as they're done with it and sell it for. Yes?
Bobby, what do you think? Five, 10, 20, 50,000 needs to be in that account? What would be? We don't know.
I would honestly say, we're going to have more issues with your bigger homes, your more depleted homes, I guess you would call them, that are in severe need. The typical girl, you know, grass too high and all that.
That's nothing.
Like I said, most normally, everybody takes care of that. I've actually had a few that tried to get somebody, I talked to the person that they were going to have come mow it for them and they got busy, couldn't do it. I actually brought my lawnmower and weed eater, came over and mowed it myself, you know? That's the way I am. And I would say probably anywhere, like I said, whatever y'all want, but between 20 and 50, probably.
Do we have resources available for owners who get in a situation with, they get into a house that's over their head, so that they are able to transfer it easily to someone else who can take care of it?
And, yeah, well, we don't necessarily have a program for that. I've got a couple properties that are in the process of doing that. I've actually, through Glenn Booth, a couple of properties that the people that own them do not have the money to fix the house that they live in. Gave them both the paperwork, it was a zero matching grant and everything, and one of them got approved. The house is already being, being worked on. The other one, I've yet to hear anything from. Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
That brings us up to public comments.
I'm Cameron Denauer, I'm a local shop owner, both service and retail at the Baron Barber. I'm in, much y'all know, it takes a lot to get me out of my cage until I get really irritated and well, now I'm really irritated. I cannot believe what is going on with this Christmas night market. You have got to be kidding me that all of the businesses downtown were not notified prior, "Hey, we've got this idea, we'd like to do this, what do you think about this? Can we get you to participate?" Instead, 10 days ago, we get, "You're going to do this. This is what we're doing and in front of your storefront, if you want to participate, we're going to charge you X amount of dollars or we're going to put it under booth up in front of your business." Now, that by definition is extortion, when you're trying to get somebody to pay for something that they already have. And it's wrong. People pay high rent prices for their brick and mortar retail spaces throughout Eureka Springs. With that high rent, you're paying for not only the building, but you're paying for its visibility, you're paying for its charm, you're paying for its history. And then to have some organization come along and tell these people, "We're going to affect this, you have no say in it, we're not going to ask it, we're telling you this is what we're doing," is wrong. Grossly mishandled in every single possible way. Then when you go to this organization and you say, "This has been grossly mishandled in every possible way," you get, your input is welcome through participation. This is by their chairperson. Not stopping to think that you get participation by allowing people to have input in the first place. This is the type of leadership that we're going to have sub-organizations carrying on in Eureka Springs and affecting people's businesses. Then I read the articles in the newspaper and I hear a lot of speculation, "There's no facts." Well, what if it brings a thousand people into, we don't know that. Oh, sales, this is the worst retail season or time, weekend of the season. Nobody's asked for our numbers, how the heck would you know that? Speculation. It's wrong. It needs to stop or it needs to be reorganized, not next year, but immediately, for this one. There are a lot of upset retailers, they're looking at blacking out windows, they're looking at turning out lights, they're looking at picketing. You decide how you're going to correct this situation.
Paul Jocinski, 46 Hillside, what he said was 100% true. Last March, I had spent 10 minutes speaking with Mike Maloney at the CA PC, which we brought to the issue of night out and with regards to what mountain towns do in other areas of the country, they have what's called Noel or Yule nights. And the idea of that is to get people into town and into the shops, into the shops. And how do they do it? As I explained, what they do is they give away free food and free soft drinks, in other words, they give cookies, brownies, quiches away, and they'll give deep discounts on the merchandise. That's what gets the people into shops. It is an insult to all the shop owners in the town that somebody's going to set up booths or tents in front of their shelves. That's not going to get them into the door. This is what works in other towns. And by the way, they do it midweek. Why don't they do it on the weekend? Look, the town is already packed on the week, there's no parking on Saturday. Anyway, you don't need to bring the people in on Saturday, that's why they usually do it on a Wednesday night. Anyway, I gave you two handouts, one had to do with what we need to do is to fix the murals every time I go to the post office. When you go to the post office and look up and you see that fading 5 cents for Coca-Cola, it makes me depressed for two reasons. Number one, it's fading away, number two, I remember when you could get a Coke for 5 cents. And the handout, I gave you two things here, which with regard to what planning is proposing for changes in the zoning code, there are numerous issues they haven't touched upon and as you might have read my emails, I think where they have touched upon it, my advice is leave the code alone. It was written by attorneys who knew what they were doing. You can't give it to a bunch of amateurs and expect a professional job. Anyway, the other thing is, there's no even proposals to regulate vacation rentals, not even for smoke alarms and CO2 detectors. And as we know, we had a fire in the city. That's why it's important to have these, because I just got my notice. My insurance rates are going up, and for the very same reason, more claims, higher insurance rates. But if vacation rentals need to be, or it's a good idea, you know, to regulate vacation rentals, as shown by the 15-page Fort Lauderdale ordinance, which is Exhibit A. Exhibit B shows that Vail is basically copying what Fort Lauderdale has done. If it's good enough for Vail, it's good enough for Fort Lauderdale, it should be good enough for Eureka, since we do have so many vacation rentals here. And all the points raised by the Airbnb people about not disclosing your identities, all that is gone. Airbnb is completely capitulated. They've caved in on their lawsuits. You can force them to disclose the identities, and therefore, force these people to pay taxes, and better yet, the back taxes that they owe for all the years that they operated without licenses and without collecting taxes. I got three, two, one, and to go. Oh, just one last thing. I did, I mentioned the sidewalks, and it was mentioned here, you know, with your building inspector here, this is an example of what lanes other cities have gone to, long down the side.
We'll pass them to you. Thanks, Bobby.
Good evening. I'm Jack Moyer. I am the chairman of the Main Street Program. And of course, I'm also the general manager of the Crescent and the Basin Park Hotel. I've been on Spring Street for 22 years, and I thought I would share with you some of the facts associated with the night market. Its origins came from a visit to the National Main Street Conference, that myself and Jackie Wobin and Amanda Haley attended. And the basis of the market is built off the Squirrel Hill Market. It's a shopping event. That's the core element, is a shopping event. We brought that idea back to our board. We have a very well-established Main Street Board. There are individuals that all have businesses in the downtown area. The board vetted that and developed the shopping event, meant to not conflict with the existing shopping that happens in the district, hence the term "night market." The night market will be open from 4:00 PM until 9:00 PM at night. It will be partnered with Living Windows. And I think you guys know the Living Windows event. It's very dynamic. That's why it needs to be on Spring Street. And we're trying to create a signature event for the Christmas season that says Eureka is open during this whole period. We had a permit. It was issued in September. We did talk to the department heads in advance of that. I met with Thomas Akord, Jackie Wobin, met with the Transit Department, and I placed a phone call to the Fire Department. We have gone under contract with the Cattywampus Market. It's purposely intended not to conflict with existing retailers. Jamie Brandt was the individual who went out, researched what market would be non-competitive, and that's how we reached out to them. We've also hired musicians. This is a success for our city. The Christmas committee starts months ago. The Christmas committee is includes the Parks Department, the city, the CAPC, the Chamber, and the Main Street component. That is how Christmas happens. There's a lot of work that happens in advance of Christmas. All the lights, things to that extent. The mayor received some calls, and he asked for Jackie to go out and poll some of the merchants. I took half of my day, and I walked shops. Our Main Street Board walked for two days, up and down the streets. I was very, very pleased with the overwhelmingly positive response that we received for that. We then met with the mayor. He convened the meeting. Bobby Ray was there, Thomas Akord was there, Mike Maloney was there. The mayor vetted the event, I believe. I won't put words in your mouth. I'm sure you'll be speaking to it. But we left there with an approval to continue forward. We then had a community meeting. Over 50 people attended to that community meeting. That was the meeting I invited you to, to ask questions, to learn more information about the event, and to also hear how the collaboration, what should be happening in our city, our Chamber, our CAPC, the Main Street Program, the Parks Department, working together to bolster Christmas. That was presented. This signature event is a component to tell everyone that Christmas happens. I appreciate you supporting the process, supporting the mayor. I do need to let you know, I have to leave by 7:30, so if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer. But I didn't know even that we were having this today. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
That it? All right. Thank you all. The next item on our...
Chairman?
Yes?
I move to reconsider the vote on the motion relating to moving the city meetings to the community center. I voted in favor of that motion.
Okay. We got a motion. I need to second?
I'll second that point.
Okay. The motion we got to, we vote to, for the reconsideration. Bob voted in the positive manner, and so, are there any questions or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor? Robert Schurz of order says that when there's an impending motion on the table...
You're right.
The person who brings the motion should be the first one to speak to it.
Okay. Well, can I have a vote first?
On what?
On whether or not to hear your motion.
The motion is to reconsider.
That's right.
And there should be discussion on that motion.
Go ahead.
Well, as the mayor said, I was confused last week. I was actually physically ill, and I did vote opposite of what I intended to vote. And at the last meeting, I tried to request reconsideration, and I was told I couldn't. But that was an error, because you actually could. Since then, I've read the two newspaper articles. And if you read their headlines, one of them says that the council voted to permanently relocate to the community center. And then the other one says that the council voted to move forward with drafting a lease that would come back for approval. So I think even the newspapers did not come out with the same idea of what we voted on. I think there was confusion all the way around, and that's why I think we need to reconsider that decision.
Any other comments? David?
Would the city clerk tell us exactly what Bob's motion was again, and then I have a comment?
This last one?
The one that...
That we're discussing now?
Yes, sir. The one we're discussing now, that he had presented at the last meeting. I'd just like to hear it again.
It was Mr. McClung's motion.
No, but you had an amendment.
My amendment was voted down, and then we voted on Mr. McClung's motion.
So that's what we're talking about, Mr. McClung?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. I just, that's what I needed to clear up, what we exactly, I wanted to clear up here, because it's not clear. So again, the motion was to go with the proposal that the foundation presented, that was that piece of paper. And then it had two options on the bottom. We could either keep up the grounds, or we could do some stuff. And we never really clarified that, so we really didn't even pick one of those two options at the bottom. We just approved the concept that they gave us, ma'am? What was it?
There were several things happening simultaneously. And when Mr. McClung made the motion, he didn't specify which of the two options.
Yes.
And so that helped create some of the confusion. There was also a misunderstanding on what the amendment meant. So that's why I was very careful to write down the exact sequence of events, anticipating that this might come up. It doesn't change Buck's position on wanting to change his vote.
Yes, ma'am. I got it now.
I mean, I could read the sequence, but it would, you would...
I'm still being... I'm clear now.
Okay.
It's the original one, not the amendment. I got it.
Okay. Correct.
I'm okay.
May I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
The motion, the gist of the motion was for the city to enter into a lease, or have a lease drawn up, with one or, with either of those options as best fitted. And it was, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't exactly specified at that meeting, because they hadn't talked about which was the best way, whether it was going to be, you know, with in-kind services or the cash. But it was, you know, that part was pretty small. And any lease is reviewable by a city attorney. If it's not something that's correct and kosher, then, of course, we're not going to sign something that's not right. And that's the way we left it.
Let Christy go first.
I was not present, so I'm really confused as to what was going on. The proposal that was given to us by the Community Center Foundation does not, unless I'm missing something, doesn't discuss whether the room is exclusive to the city or not. Though I had understood that, yeah, that it was in the minutes, but I don't know...
It is not.
The motion that was made was, well, okay, was the motion on the non-exclusive basis?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If you will read the sequence of events, those answers will...
I did. I did.
Correct.
I did.
Yes, sir. We approved the minutes earlier, and this is from the minutes that we have now approved. It says, "Mr. McClung moved to choose the community center for the meetings as soon as space is available." That was the motion.
So is your current motion to reconsider your vote on the original motion?
Correct.
That's what I was trying to... Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
My concern with this whole thing is not a negative towards the foundation, or the concept of the community center, or nothing. I'm having a problem with the order in the way that we're approaching this. And it seems to me, when I look at this situation, I would have thought that we would have approached the school board to ask about the property before we decided to jump into an arrangement with the foundation. And then, I know we're going to have some more discussion here. But right now, the way I look at it, we did at one time have the fire station, Norris Street. Potentially, we could have stayed here. And then we also had the community center. So there was about four options that were floating around out there. And it seemed to me that we should have at least heard from the school board whether it was going to come to the city or not. And then in the packet, I find something that really surprises me, and this is probably out of order. The city would gain ownership and not management of the site, therefore, it would not have the option of allocating space. And I'm sure that's going to come up in a minute. So I'm having a lot of difficulty. And you look at the minutes now, unfinished, we're talking about Dr. Beard's interest in lease, before we talk about the Attorney General's opinion, before we talk about the school board, and then we discuss the community. It just seems out of sequence to me. It's almost like it's predetermined that we're going with the community center, and I'm just not, I'm having difficulty with it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Terry prefaced his motion by stating the fact that we needed to hurry up and take some kind of action, because the year was waning. And therefore, he made a motion that we accept moving to the community center, the details to be worked out later. That's basically all the motion was, was saying, yes, it will be the community center, as opposed to the thousands that would do the fire department, and the fact that Dr. Beard was wanting to keep his place. But we had to make a positive movement, and that's basically all that motion was supposed to be meaning.
Mr. McClung?
The foundation, you know, if, if, and I don't expect the school board to give us anything. I truly don't. But even if the school board said, here you go, Mr. Mayor, you can have the school property in good riddance, it's still subject to the lease of the foundation. And they have control of it. They can't, I mean, it's not something that they can just unilaterally break. I mean, they're in contract with it. So it doesn't matter if they gave it to us or not.
Bob, you had... Oh, I was just going back to the fact that I'm regretting my vote. During the discussion, the city attorney actually advised us, or subtly advised us, that the motion was not appropriate as it was, and suggested that we change it. And I think we all ignored his advice when we voted for it.
Christy?
One thing that has bothered me throughout this whole conversation is it seems like this donation of the community center property has jumped up, and has somehow gotten itself wrapped up in our meeting space. And to me, it should be entirely different issue, unless there's something that I'm not being told about. The, you know, we're being offered a lease by the community center for our meeting space. And I don't know how the donation fits into this, and yet it keeps on coming up in this conversation. And would somebody please explain to me how the donation fits into this? Because...
Talking about making a donation to the foundation? Just give them some money, if that's what you're talking about.
No, 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 no. The donation by the school board...
That was not a...
Of the high school property to the city. How does that fit in with our meeting space discussion?
That's the mayor. She should answer that one, probably.
It probably didn't until this little sentence appeared in this thing we got here, that the ownership, but the management of the site. So if we'd have known this all along, the issue about the donation and all wouldn't have fit in, because this changes a whole lot of the way the property is. The second part is, it was no urgent thing to do. Once we moved the meetings over here, and achieved ADA compliance, and started closed captioning this particular meeting, which is the one that we're televised, although we're televised, and all of them were closed captioning this one, we started meeting the requirements of the ADA. I don't know if it's 100% or 90 or whatever, but we started meeting the most of it. And so this moving here took the immediacy of finding a place to meet off of the table.
I think we're all getting sidetracked here.
Well, not really, because...
Well, I mean, what we're talking about is the discussion, whether or not we want to go ahead and rehear the motion.
Yeah, and we can...
I mean, this all ties together.
Okay.
In one sense. And, you know, it's confusing as it is. I think the first thing we need to do is find out whether or not we want to redo the vote. Mickey?
Like I said before, it all boils down to taking a positive action on a piece of property that we know we can get, whereas the others, we either cannot get, or it's going to cost too much to get. Therefore, we need to make a positive movement, and we can work out details later.
All right. Any further discussion on rehearing the vote? Redoing the vote? All right. All those in favor of revoting?
Roll call, please.
Reconsider the vote on moving the meetings?
Reconsidering the vote. Reconsidering the vote, yes. All right. Have a roll call?
Bob Thomas?
Yes.
Christy Kendrick?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
Derek McClung?
Nope.
Mickey Snyder?
Nope.
Three, two.
What did the attorney say?
Attorney doesn't have anything to say.
We have to wait.
Oh.
Yeah, it's like, you know, whether or not to rehear it, I'm still in favor of going ahead with as it was voted the last time, so I'm not going to vote.
Motion fails.
We had, at the beginning of the meeting, an opportunity, and we can rearrange our agenda any way we want. I'm thinking of what Mr. Mitchell was talking about, in order how this is being progressed and through here. So if we want to talk about Dr. So if we want to talk about Dr. Beard's lease later on, I would still entertain a motion to defer that to a later time, or we can bring that up now. Mickey?
Since all of the unfinished business is about the school property and stuff, could we move the Spring Street discussion to number one, get that out of the way, because we have a lot of people here for that? Could we get that done, and then we can spend the rest of the meeting on the school stuff? I'm assuming it's under old business, because we brought it up at the last meeting.
Thank you for that.
The thing I had added to the agenda about this event in December?
Right, that's where it began.
Right, can we make that number one instead of number five under the unfinished business?
That's up to the council.
Well, that's what I'm asking, because then the rest of it's all school.
Mr. McClung?
Community.
Well, I suggest you go ahead and combine two and three and hear them and get them over with. Let's go.
Let's hear two and three first. Yeah, yeah. Everybody in favor of that?
They're the same topic anyway, for all practical purposes, so...
Excuse me, I don't understand how they are the same topic. How is giving the old high school to the city related to our meeting space?
Well, I think the motion, I mean, what, we can either go as the agenda is right now, or we can combine items, or we can talk about two and three first. I mean, it's up to the council how they want to handle this.
What about moving Spring Street up?
I didn't get a second on that.
Oh, I didn't make a motion. Do I need to make a motion? Okay, I make a motion that we move the discussion on the agenda up to number one, because we have several people here in regards to that. And then we can go ahead and do all the other stuff together however you want to. Second, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion to move the events of Spring Street up to discussion of number one under unfinished business. All those in favor, say five and saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Upstaying?
No.
Three, two.
Two, two, one, it fails.
Three, two, all right.
No, two, two, one.
Okay, two, two, one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We're going to sit here and pull around with this. Let's just go with the agenda as it's written and just proceed with the meeting.
Okay, let's go. All right, everybody got a copy of Norris, the lease that I just got in the paper or in the mail today from Dr. Beard's attorney?
Wow, no.
No?
You didn't receive? Oh, I just got a copy, I'm sorry. The newest, the latest thing was whether or not, and this is just Tim's, for Tim. They want a clarification on whether or not the council can determine the lease or whether it's a hospital commission. And I don't know whether Tim's aware to give that opinion or not.
Yes, I will stand by what I've said before, that ultimately the council controls all city property for the long-term lease of something. I believe it has to come before this board unless you want to delegate that power. If it was delegated, as the attorney for Dr. Beard suggests back some 40, 50 years ago, I think this council clearly could decide that that delegation was not followed through with, because when the payments were stopped being received by the city, no one notified the city council that they were no longer receiving the benefit of the property, and that it could have been addressed at that time. So I think it falls back in the lap of the city council to dictate whether there is a lease, who that lease is with, and who the terms are with, or what the terms are.
Yes, David.
Well, the attorney's come in to, he's made his opinion, and he's stuck with it, and I appreciate it. You know, the only thing, it's amazing how Dr. Beard's attorney has all these interesting points to make when it's appropriate for her and her client. But all we have, that's been supplied to us, is an old lease from '91 to '94 for $275 a month that they provided us. There's been no other lease. So technically, since 1994, Dr. Beard, as far as we know, has been in his office without a proven lease, a secondary lease of any type, just word. And we don't know the amount of money that he was raised from $275 a month to whatever supposedly. We don't know at what point this negotiation that we hear about for putting in an HVAC system and a new roof or whatever it was came to be. So if we go back to '94, let's just say '95, he put the HVAC system in and all that, why hasn't he paid rent after he paid off that stuff? Why hasn't rent been paid up to this date? Not a penny. There's quite a bit of money that is owed by the person that was the leasing to this city for a piece of property. What's going on? What kind of, you know, a person just sits in a building that's owned by somebody else and just doesn't pay the lease? I mean, that's, it's just wrong. And I think we should, if we even consider a lease with the person that's occupying that building now, we should consider a payment, a back payment of money that is owed, and it's also built into it some way, shape, and a form, because all these years of paying nothing is totally inappropriate and unethical.
Yes, ma'am.
When we start, first started talking about Norris Street, I had been advised, and I think the rest of council, that the hospital commission had been, had offers for $2,000 a month. And I do not understand why we are not considering such offers. Right now, this property has been sitting, while we've been discussing this, completely making no money whatsoever the last at least couple of months, and for many months before that. I don't find Dr. Beard being very forthcoming. He has not explained to us how much the cost of the air conditioning and the roof was. We're supposed to presume that it was enough to permit him to go for years without paying rent. I don't know that he is a desirable lessee. I'd like to consider other lessies at this point.
Any further comments? I have a question. Yes, sir.
Is what was submitted by their attorney, is it a lease proposal, or is it...
We have not received any...
Nothing.
Lease proposal.
Yeah.
Well, I submitted a lease to them.
Right, I recall that. Well, as I stated, and when I made the motion in the last meeting, was that, you know, is that we have to make a determination on where we're going to stay, and apparently we've done that. And so the lease is going to be negotiated between Mr. Weaver, yourself, and the foundation, so that takes care of that. So I have to agree with her, you know. If he's not willing to cooperate, and you've got somebody else that's willing to pay that kind of money, I would keep it at five-year intervals and something like that. But, yeah, let's start getting the money.
Okay. I guess I need a motion to, I guess what I heard you say, Mr. McClung, was for Mr. Weaver and I to negotiate with Dr. Beard on the lease. What was your motion?
I can make a motion if you'd like, and she's wanting to say something.
I'd like to make a motion that we pursue as many offers to lease the property as possible through the hospital commission as well as from Dr. Beard, though, and that's as far as my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Mr. McClung has a question for your lighting.
I'm just, I'm not exactly sure I'd word it like that, but I, you know, yeah, I think we need to, you know, make it available. I don't know that the hospital commission has anything to do with it, but...
No, I meant, the people that they had in mind, I would...
The hospital is interested in leasing.
Yeah, the hospital itself is interested in leasing.
Oh, oh, I just understood. I thought the hospital commission was evil.
It's the tenants.
Okay.
Hospital.
Well, and they can pay rent to us, too.
Sure.
Yeah, it's clear without the hospital commission, because if they're not, if they can't any type of lease, which they shouldn't be, then it definitely should be just, it's open. Now, any lease that is brought forward, is that going to come to council, or are you giving the authority to the mayor to do it?
I think, well, I think the mayor can negotiate the lease. I mean, we kind of have that $2,000 figure in mind. If they come in with something less than that, he can certainly bring it to us. But I think that's key, is we keep it to like five years or something like that, and red flag somehow, so it doesn't repeat the same history that it just went through and get lost in the shuffle.
But then why do we have resolutions or something come about the courthouse space and the parking lease?
That's because we're leasing that to the county.
Not in private, so you do, you do private leases without council?
No, I get the council approval, because we're paying the county money to lease the property.
But on other leases?
I don't know who we have other leases.
I'm just trying to figure out the authority for leasing. Does it need to come to council, or can it stay with the mayor?
There have been in the past, and they all came before council.
I think that's it.
Just checking, I'm trying to figure out where we're at.
Okay, okay. Ms. Kendrick?
I would perhaps add to my motion that I would like the mayor to bring back offers to lease the property, and...
I think that would go without saying.
Well, and to explain the addition to my motion, is I believe that perhaps there are more desire, some other factors than pure rent that may be involved in our deciding who to lease to.
Could you restate your motion?
Yes, yes. I would like to move that the mayor garner offers to lease the property, the Norris Street property, and to bring them back to the council for consideration. And I will second that, if that's appropriate.
Mr. Weaver?
If I might make a suggestion. I would suggest that since the entity now wishing to lease, Dr. Beard, is trying to say that the commission has the authority to lease, that you place in your motion a statement that the council not recognize any other entity's ability to lease the property at this time, thereby preventing a document to potentially be signed that may have to be voided through a court action.
I hope that the hospital commission would not take such a step.
I would hope so, too, but without a direction, I feared that it might not.
Okay, I will add that, that the mayor also make it very clear to any potential lessies that the council alone has the power to lease this property. Is that responsive? Council alone and not the hospital commission?
You want, let's start all over. Let's restart, draw you a second. Let's restate the motion, please.
I can word it for you. Is that, is that where you're going? Mayor, mayor, not council. Mr. Attorney, is that what you were looking for?
Something along that line.
I think I've got it.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the mayor with the city attorney entertain leasing proposals for the Norris Street process, and that the lesor is only the city of Eureka Springs under the mayor and city council.
Second.
Okay. So everybody understand the motion? Any further comments? All those in favor, say five and saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Will do. All right. Your motion to discuss the AG's opinion?
So moved.
Actually, I'd like to go ahead and combine the two. I mean, we're going to be talking about both of them.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. First of all...
I would like an explanation as to how ownership of the old high school property is relevant to our leasing meeting space from the foundation.
I'm not sure it is, but...
Then why are we combining?
We're not. We're giving the AG's opinion and the school board's feedback.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I got it.
Everybody got a copy of the AG's opinion? I was asked also to get the school board feedback, and that's real simple. I've got a date set up for January 6th, I believe. It's actually our first meeting date in January. They meet on the first Mondays of the month to be on the agenda. So I'm going to be meeting with them at 5:00 on the 6th to see if they are interested. What?
January 6th?
Whatever the first Monday in January is.
Oh, okay, that would be 8.
It's our first meeting date.
Yeah, that would be 8.
And so I don't know what their feeling is about the school board, about donating the school property to the city. I know there's one or two members that are interested in it, but I know also, as Mr. McClung noted, there's probably some that aren't. The attorney general's opinion, I don't know if y'all read through that, notes that they can give the property to the school if it's on education or a community benefit. Ms. Kendrick?
What are we trying to achieve by considering the donation of the high school to the city?
If, by giving it to the city, they become eligible for grants. The foundation would be saving roughly a half a million dollars, or whatever the purchase price, $400,000, whatever the school purchase price is. And they would be able to put that money into the fundraising, into developing the community center. Also be eligible for matching grants, which right now they are not eligible for because it's a nonprofit organization. The grants that they're available for are basically only available to municipal governments. There's also the opportunity, if we get the property, that we could move, and it's just a possibility, and we'd have to figure out whether or not we can afford it, and work out some sort of a deal because of moving the city offices up to there, to the school. The downside of that is that their foundation had developed a financial plan that dictates that building, I want to say 100, as a rental income to pay for and to make the community center self-sufficient without any contributions from the city. When we first started this project, or when the foundation did, I wasn't elected mayor yet, and they had appointed me and said something, would the city be interested? I said, "We couldn't afford it if you gave it to us." And that developed the foundation to come up with a financial plan on how to make that project self-sufficient and work financially feasible, without the city donating or contributing any financial money into the project. So it's a two... city donating or contributing any financial money into the project. So, it's a two-fold thing. I don't know whether we could, we would move up there. I don't know if we could financially, but that's where this all comes about. There's a lot of opportunities there if the city has the ownership of the building. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, two, two points, and this is just, maybe it's a very simplistic view, but it seems to me like the, the taxpaying citizens of this town paid for the old high school with, with tax.
Not the city, the district.
The district paid for.
Which is Holiday Island, all the way out.
Okay.
Everything west of the Kings River.
Okay. So, if the, say the school district all of a sudden takes a look and says, you know, all these taxpayers really paid for the old high school, and all these taxpayers really paid for the new high school. So in essence, the schools belong to the taxpayers, and by giving this property to the city to develop this community center, we are, in essence, giving back property that was paid for by taxpayers. And then, my other point would be, if, say they, the school district does give the property to the city, which then allows the community, the, the foundation not to have to pay $400,000, $20,000 a year over 20 years, frees up all that money to, to work on the community center, wouldn't you think that the foundation would be so enamored with the city that they could give us that lousy little meeting room?
Separate issue.
That sits there, no, I haven't finished yet. It sits right there on the side if we put the, the walkway and everything in, because if you turn to the left, there's a really large room there that makes a wonderful meeting room, and leave this lousy little tiny meeting room for the city. I mean, come on. That's my comment.
All things are possible. I had some comments down here first. Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that, that if, if the school was to just turn it over to the, the city, why, you know, with the foundation having control of it, it's, you know, we, we can't pay for it. And, and, and the foundation might be able to, and they might not. And that's a risk that, that I've never been willing to take. And when it was considered, when it was brought up recently about them giving it to us, it was with, with the idea of moving city offices up there, and, you know, where we, all we'd have to do is go up there and remodel and, and have, have office space and, and more accessible and, and all those good things. That was, that was the only enticement in, in having them give it to us in the first place, for me. That, that made it, you know, a sound idea. You know, with the foundation, you know, still, you know, if they're going to play, if they're going to keep control of everything like, like they say they would, then it's not, it's not a good deal for the city. I, I don't believe. But, but it doesn't take away from still leasing the, the other, and, and, because, you know, I don't think the school board is going to give it to us, and getting good luck at the meeting on the 6th, or 8th, or whenever it is you go, and, and that's just my thoughts.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in regards to David's first thing, I've been saying that for five years, ever since their first meeting. It's my understanding, and I may have this turned around, so you guys are going to have to tell me. City-owned property, do we pay, does the city pay taxes on that?
No.
Okay. So if the school board gave us the old school property, we would not have to pay taxes on it, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. So, what I had talked to several of the foundation, to the community center foundation people about was, if the school board, who does not own it, gives it to the city for our benefits, which is what they should be doing, intend, if they give it to us, then the foundation no longer has to pay $20,000 a year, they are now able to get a slew of big money grants.
It's...
Because it's city property, they could let us have, whether it's the one little building or the big one, doesn't matter, but they could let us have that one, we'll say that little building, for exclusive use, which is a real big thing for an awful lot of us. Exclusive use only. They can continue to do all of their fundraising like they've been doing, they just don't have to spend $20,000 a year, and they get extra grant money. To me, that's like a triple plus. This is what I think should be done for the community, and I don't see that the city would be having to spend much more than the sidewalk payment thing, you know, to get those handicapped sidewalks. I don't know what else we'd be doing, because they would still be totally in charge of keep, of the upkeep and everything else.
Ms. Kendrick?
If we were to accept the donation of the old high school property, it would be subject to the lease to the foundation. The foundation would be in total control of the use of the property. And, right now, that their plan includes using the building 100 as, basically, the source of their funding to support the entire community center, I don't see, under that plan, I don't see how the city would benefit at all. Now, perhaps, if you were to say, if we were to accept it and the foundation were to rework their plan, because no longer do they have to pay this $40,000 a year, then it might make sense. But as it is right now, we are, would be accepting a piece of property that another entity controls, that we really don't know very much about what their plan is. I haven't seen their books and records. I think it's, it would be extremely dangerous to take on this possib, the ownership of this building without having done our due diligence about what the plans are for this building, or the, the entire property, and how the, how the foundation is doing and what their plans are.
Yes, sir.
I just have a question. I don't understand how, if the city got the property, the foundation would keep control of the property but be released from their $20,000 a year payment? Why, why would they be released from that?
The lease is there on the property.
Yeah, they're buying it.
And if, if the lease is recorded in the real estate records, that if we accept the property, it is subject to that lease.
And that, that lease is to buy the property, is that not?
Yes.
So they would still be buying it?
Under the terms of the lease.
They would be paying the city instead of the school?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's...
Well, it's not quite right.
Which is a whole different ballgame. Yeah. Thank you.
Any student dealmaker would let the community center know, if you really want this property for the community center, then you will allow us to take over the ownership of the property. We will let you out of your $20,000 a year. You will let us have our building. Or, we will not accept the offer from the school board. That's how deals are made. You have an existing lease. You say, we need to change your lease. Everybody would be fine and happy if the school board wanted to get rid of it.
Ms. Kendrick?
You would also know a lot more information about people that you would be doing business with.
Well, that's a given.
Right now, I haven't seen their books and records. I haven't seen their current plans. I would feel extremely uncomfortable accepting a donation without knowing a lot more information about the people that I would be doing.
Guys, they're going to have a hard time transcribing this, so we can keep it down to one person at a time, please. Mr. Lassiter's here, representing the foundation. I think you had a...
Yes, Blake Lassiter, with the Community Center Foundation. Our books and everything are very transparent. Anytime you want to look at them, they're available. But I would like to say, we're doing this for the community. You know, Eureka Springs, the surrounding area. The more of us that get involved in this project, I mean, the greater success we're going to have. If the school board gives the property to the city, it opens us up to hundreds of grant possibilities that will, you know, maybe bring a pool, trail systems. It just frees us up. And it's, this would be a wonderful partnership between us, that we could do something for our city that's a big win for all of us. And I know a lot of people are negative about it. They think it's going to fail, but at the end of the day, this is for people like my daughter and the other kids that need a place for after-school, for, you know, recreation, and I just wish we would get on board with this, because I think it's going to really improve our city.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'd beg to differ with you, except that we are on board with this. We just are concerned about the details and the flow of it. So, if Ms. Kendrick's is correct, and the lease moves over, and you have a lease purchase, and then the property becomes ours, so then the lease is to be to the city for $20,000 a year for $400,000, which we would probably, at some point, negotiate something with you. We still go back to the fact that we just wanted a, a dedicated meeting space, and somehow, that seems to be a big issue for us, and/or...
No one is going to explain to us why you need a dedicated meeting space. If you would explain to me, I can go back to the board and push for that, but I need a rationale.
Why would we have to, to, to do that when we would be sitting in the ownership of the property and we're negotiating? Is that a negotiating factor with the foundation or not?
Well, here's the, here's the financial model. We've got this carefully planned out, how we are going to be self-sufficient. If you start carving off blocks of that building for the city, it damages our financial model. We've got to figure out a new financial source.
You'll stand there and say that for one little tiny room at the end, it's not even affecting your other ability. You actually would be willing to, that the city couldn't take over the ownership of that property, get you out of a $400,000 debt for a lousy little room at the corner? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that lousy little room still has to have heat and air, has to be maintained.
I got it.
I mean, we're trying our best.
Mickey?
I know, I taught the diet. The, the key thing of an exclusive room, like I tried to explain to Diane, the biggest thing is, it's ours and nobody else can play with our toys, okay? This is basically what it comes down to. I mean, it's more serious than that, but that's what it is. But if the lease is renegotiated, I like the idea of the city getting $20,000 a year, David, but I don't think that's what it's about, and it shouldn't be. This isn't supposed to be a plan for the city to get money. It's supposed to be a plan for the community, for us to do things together. And I just really, really feel, if we have that little room and it's strictly ours, and you're not having to pay $20,000 a year, and you're getting grant money, all of that should more than cover that little teeny one room. That's my big deal. That's my little problem that's very strong.
I need a reason to take to my board why that has to be dedicated.
Because you're going to get a billion dollars in place of that.
Because no other space is dedicated for a council.
We may be, again, we may be putting the horse before the cart. We don't even know for getting the building yet.
The horse goes before the cart.
Cart before the horse. All right. We're trying. Cart before the horse. So, Mr. McClung?
Yeah, you know, here and then, we're, it's just all conjecture and speculation. But, but I will say this, if the school board said, okay, city, we'll give this to you, and, and then the foundation, if they, you know, whether they have to continue to pay the 20 to us, or, or, or not, at the end of 20 years, because of their lease, you know, if, if they continue paying somebody, you know, the school board may want that money. You know, they may still want that money for as long as they pay it, but regardless, the, at the end of the 20 years, they're going to, they're going to own it, and we ain't going to own nothing, because that's what their contract says. Is that not correct?
That's why you renegotiate it.
So, so, you know, so you've got, you've got three entities that, if the school board said, yes, we'll give it to you, then we'll say, okay, we'll, we'll take it only if these, you know, this criteria can be met, and that's what has to be set. So, you know, until the school board says that they're, have any interest in all doing it, I mean, it's, we're wasting our time.
I agree. Ms. Kendrick?
I also would like to really caution council to get the details of the deal. It's very nice to hear about what's good for the community, but that's what we heard about on the sewer plant, too. And I don't want to kumbaya our way into a half of a community center the same way we did into half a sewer plant. So we really need to know what we're doing.
Well, just like to remind everybody that we just upheld a vote to move to the community center. You sort of do away with a lot of your bargaining power. Don't you tell them you're coming?
Well, yes and no. If they, there's still a lot of issues going on. If we get, if the school allows us the building, there's still a negotiation in through there. But that's going to be before the school board. We don't know what the school board's going to do yet. Ms. Mitchell?
And don't forget, councilman, we still have to approve that lease with the foundation.
Yeah, we haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, but I mean, we can negotiate for years and years, but we're committed to going there. And the devil's in the details, so hang on.
Any further discussion? All right. No further discussion. And actually, that brings us down to that number four, and I think the discussion of the community center rooms will, would have been discussed on that, too. So, um, new business.
Wait a minute, mine, number five.
Event in December.
Spring Street. Oh, event in December. Okay. All right. Motion to discuss, event in December.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Mickey?
I'm sorry. Okay. Brought this up at the last meeting to try to get information straightened out, because I had two different copies, two different event things set up in December. One was for Saturday the 2nd, one was for Saturday the 9th. Things in the meantime have gotten more and more confusing, and believe me, I am hearing from the merchants. We've already gotten some paperwork from some of them on their feelings on this. I would like to know, I have several questions here that I have got to ask. This event, Mr. Mayor, is scheduled for the 9th, right?
Correct.
And what are the hours that you want in Spring Street closed, or that's been agreed upon, whatever?
Well, they're going to be setting up, I believe, at 2:00. The street actually begins at 4:00.
So what time are you closing, Spring?
2:00.
2:00. Till, what was it, 10:00?
9:00.
9:00. Okay.
Except that the street will still be open for people to pick up packages and deliveries. If you've got a package, if you bought something, there's gift shop wrapping, there'll be gift wrapping up there, and you'll be able to drive up to your shop, to the shop.
So the street's not being closed?
It's going to be closed through traffic, but if you're coming up to pick up a, a gift or a package, it won't be closed.
Okay, because I was told on that part that if somebody was buying something that was going to have to be wrapped and picked up, that they would make arrangements with the shop person, and the shop person would have to walk it down or up to someplace to meet. This is, I'm telling you what merchants are telling me. Just wait a minute, just wait a minute, Jack. No, just wait a minute. So, in regards to that, that's causing confusion. The other confusion was...
You want to address one at a time?
I'm going to address you.
Okay.
Which businesses did you, when I first contacted you, saying, I don't know what this is about, and you sent me your information, which businesses was it that you sent the survey to, to see how they felt about this?
It was business that was affected along Spring Street.
Okay, now, by being affected, what do you mean by that?
That the parking was not... That the parking was not gonna be, that, well, the parking would be, there'd be no parking in front of their business.
Okay. So the parking spot businesses, is what you're talking about?
From Center Street up to the Mountain Street, that's where, that's where all they went to.
Okay. Because I've had several merchants tell me, well, excuse me, this is an event going on, it affects me, I don't care where my shop is, whether I have parking or not, and you have lived here as long as I have, well, longer, we both know, you can be all the way up at Upper Main, oh, that away, Upper Main, and have an event going on up there, and these people are affected. These merchants are furious that they were left out because they weren't in a two-block area. They are part of the city, they get affected, and this kind of stuff is wrong. They had no knowledge, when they did get knowledge, it's two different sets of information, just like I pointed out for the last meeting, two days, two different days, two hours, now I'm hearing it's gonna be both the second and the ninth, unlimited different hours and stuff. The merchants are furious. And I have some merchants over here that would like to address you in regards to the situation, why council didn't know, why nobody knew anything until the very last minute. So if we would, now?
Point of order.
I am, I'm letting a person talk.
What's your point of order?
Point of order, does, does council have the right to call up?
Yes.
At, at some point to discuss?
Yes.
And do they have a timeframe or any type of rules or regulations about that?
We, we have the right to let a person talk, to ask for them.
I'm asking you.
Well, you're looking at me.
Well, I'm looking at him, too, you just happen to be on the same side of the table as him.
Council in the past has allowed people to talk by a vote of the council.
Vote of the council, okay.
Oh, by a vote, okay, we haven't done that all the time. Okay, Mel Shipley would like to talk, and Karen would like to talk, those are the only two. I have everybody in here watching and submitting and stuff, those are the only two people who would like to be heard.
So can we have a vote?
So I think there should be a vote. You need to make a motion.
You're looking at him.
I'm looking at you, you're the one that needs to...
Well, I make a motion that we allow these two people to speak, as we've done in the past, so we can get their feelings, and they're the ones who are affected.
Do I have a second?
I'll give it a second, and then I'll have an amendment.
Okay.
There's a timeframe of two minutes.
Does that work for you guys?
That has to be voted on.
I should say five.
You gotta have, the amendment's gotta be...
This is very serious.
Voted on.
I, I second that amendment.
What?
Okay, two minutes. All right, we got a motion on the amendment, discussion on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
I can't even say my name in two minutes.
Yeah. This is a very serious situation, needs to be addressed by the people it's affecting.
I, I made the motion, I...
All right, I'm in favor of the amendment, we can get a roll call.
Specify.
The two-minute limit is the amendment. Mr. McClung?
No.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Two, three. Motion fails.
I make a motion, we allow them five minutes to talk.
I, don't we have a motion on this?
We got a motion, you wanna make, you wanna amend the motion?
Okay, I'm amending the motion to five minutes.
I get a second?
I second that.
Any discussion on that? All right, roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Four, one.
All right. Now, for the main motion, before you do that, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
If the motion is to limit it to just these two people, that could be a violation of freedom of speech.
Yeah.
You need to make it how many ever people?
Okay, so I need to change my motion to let these people speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Let it, let the public speak.
Okay.
Because Jack wants to speak, too.
Sorry, Jack, didn't mean to annoy you. So I'm changing my notes and say, let the public speak on this issue.
Got it.
And, I don't know who seconded that, I think.
David?
Yeah. You seconded the original motion?
With caveat of making it two minutes, yes, but he did second it.
I'm not gonna second this again.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor, would do a roll call?
And what is the motion, please?
To allow the public to speak for five minutes.
On this issue only?
Well, yes.
Oh, I'm looking at you.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Obey.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Four, zero, one.
All right, Mel Shipley, you'd like, wanna come up here and speak, you were on your way a minute ago, sir?
I'm an entertainer, but this is off topic.
There you go.
Will it work like that? Okay. I'm Mel Shipley, and I have two shops on Spring Street, two buildings on Spring Street, Upper Spring Street. My wife and I both own the Selly-Chelly in 85 Spring Street Art Gallery. Two weeks ago, two days ago, the Main Street people came into my gallery and informed me that they're gonna close Spring Street. Move me away. I thought, really? How's this happening? They said, well, not only is it happening, but you're the only one against it. Now, I figured right away, somebody's not telling the truth here, because four years ago, we had a city council put thumbs down on closing that street unanimously. We stormed the city hall. Two of you were there. Now, Jack says he went up the street partway, back down again, and he found it great. The day I found out about this, the very next day, I was on the street, too, and I went from the top to the bottom, and I turned around, and I went back up to the other side. I count 26 people who did not want this to happen. Now, they try to tell you, look, we're not gonna put something in that's gonna interfere with what you're selling, right? We find vendors that will sell things the people here don't sell. What could that be? What could it possibly be? We are in the market of selling the want. We don't have anything other than what people want, and anything you put on that street is gonna fall in that criteria. If you wanna boost traffic, bring in entertainers. Get yourself a nice little wagon, put some hay bales on it, and take people rides, but don't come into competition with us. Anything you sell is competition. We're already dealing with internet, we're already dealing with the boom going on in 49th corridor. We don't need more competition, trust me. You know, when I found out about this, I thought, what mayor in God's green earth would shut down his main district of shopping? Who would do that? We found one, they found one, and then they went about to keeping it quiet. Isn't it amazing that it was signed on September the 1st, and the shop owners didn't find out about it until a month, what, 13 days later? I walked the street, and I asked them, and I handed out pieces of paper, have you heard about this, have you heard about, nobody heard about it. And yet, Mr. Moriarty, Moriarty would tell you, yeah, we put the word out, it wasn't on the internet, I couldn't find it, and neither could the people I talked to. This is backdoor politics. That's truly what it is, and it should not exist. We should be a part of this. You guys should be a part of this, you guys should want to be a part of this. The only way you're gonna make something work in the community is to work together, and when you shut one side out, and then try to whitewash it and say that didn't happen, that doesn't work. You were right, there could be a firestorm, there could be picketers, there could be blackout windows. This thing could turn ugly. It shouldn't. What are you leaving your citizens, what are you leaving your shop owners? We're invested deeply here, and this is our livelihoods, and we do not appreciate not being a part of the decision-making when it comes to what we have bought and paid for, what we are working for. We are the people that are paying the taxes, that's making this thing work here. I appreciate your time, I hope you guys get engaged, I hope you can come with a resolution that will take away the power from a dictatorship back to the people. We need a board of people that we can communicate with, that can control. We don't need one-sided decisions. Thank you.
Could I recognize?
Ms. Renblatt?
Okay, I'm just gonna put these at this end, and you can pass them down. This is a petition signed by a lot of retailers, and I have included, because I FOIA'd all of the emails that came into the mayor when he was telling me that on the decision of three businesses, he thought we should carry this ahead. These are the emails that people sent to him saying, we are not in favor of it. And I will tell you that a lot of the people on this list have had businesses for a long time. We at Gazeebo Books are starting our 42nd year in business, and I can tell you, anytime Spring Street is closed down, business goes down. So here's this.
I got it.
This is the timeline. On September 1st, Butch Berry, Mayor Berry, signed the application for this, okay? On November 7th, he sent an email to Jackie Woven saying that she had not talked to the fire department or to the police department about this event. On November 8th, the mayor emailed Jackie that he thought they were unhappy retailers, and he thought she would canvass, he thought she should canvass the retailers. On the 10th, he sent an email to the retailers for their opinion, finally, two months, more than two months after he signed the permit, finally, he contacts the retailers, okay? On the 10th, Jackie emails the mayor that it's 100% support for this, for this event. Before that, she emailed him and told him it was 80%, okay? And on the 10th of November, Jackie visits the businesses, I don't, I talked to other retailers, there was no survey done, we were told that this was happening, period. We have had no say in this, you know, we, as Mel pointed out, we pay a lot of money to have our businesses, and by the way, Jamie from T-Rex told us at the meeting that they held down at Main Stage, that the only items that were going to be sold at the market were two-dimensional items. Well, somebody better go to the Caddywampus Crafts website and find out that they sell all kinds of things, including items that our retailers sell. Plus, in one email, or one thing that, I think it was the permit, they're gonna have music on the street, too. You know, the retailers have no choice here. We can't say, no, we don't want a booth in front of our businesses. The only thing that the retailers can say is, oh, yes, I'll pay $120 for a booth, so I can pull stuff out of my shop. Our shops are small here, we don't need to be pulling our stuff out on the street, and if money's tight already, why would you want to spread it out further? Plus, and it's been advertised all over the place, the Caddywampus Craft Co-op is having a huge sale in Fayetteville on December 2nd. And I have heard it all over the radio. So, those people are gonna come over here, when they've already shopped over there, and on, on the permit, Jackie said they were expecting 100 to 500 people. It was Jamie from T-Rex that said, well, don't you want 1,000 customers? Well, we don't know we're gonna get 1,000 customers. You know, there've been questions about electricity, there've been questions about where are these people gonna use restrooms? But to me, the bottom line is, it affects the retailers big time, we weren't told for two months, and then we were told it's too late. We don't really, we don't want your opinion, this is gonna happen, and you're just gonna deal with it. And I'm telling you, there are retailers that didn't sign this that are mad also, and this is about half of the retailers on Spring Street, if not all, because we've got some empty spaces. And I would ask that the council take back control of closing Spring Street and closing streets in town, because to have it decided by one person is really a crime. And I went in and talked to Butch for 35 minutes, and you know, he like, pretty much blew it off. So, you know, if you want your retailers in this town to continue to be happy, you better start including them on things that are gonna affect their bottom line, and this will, big time. And when the traffic goes, when they close off, the parking at 2:00, most of the business, as you know, most of the business comes in in the afternoon, so from 2:00 on, no one will be able to park on Spring Street unless they're already there. Thank you.
I appreciate hearing from Mel and respect to his business, we have a difference of, difference of opinion. We did visit Mel's shop, Jackie came in and met with Mel, and he clearly stated he was not in support of that, but he wasn't, wouldn't block that, or that's my, my perception, but I understand that Mel has a difference of opinion. There's a few things that I wanna make sure that, that you all understand, and, and I can share with you. Main Street is a volunteer board, it's not just one person, it's a group of nine individuals who dedicate their time year-round to participate and to move the community forward. I just asked for you guys to think back, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, and ask where the Christmas shopping season was back then. And you got a question, does that just organically happen, or is there an organization that's maybe furthering the economic growth and improvement for the, for the city? Because when I moved here, 22 years ago, there was no Christmas shopping season, and somebody's doing the work to further that, to have a shopping season vibrant. One of those, one of those events is Living Windows, and Living Windows has been very successful, and I think you guys recently have enjoyed that. Living Windows, pairing together with the Spring Street Market, is a shopping event intended to drive more traffic. Jamie Brandt, who happens to be the, a retailer directly in the middle of Spring Street, was a part of the development of this concept, and, and went out and reached out to find a market that was non-competitive. We learned in, at the National Main Street, this is where Main Streets are going, okay? Doing the same thing over and over and over again does not yield growth, it yields attrition, and that's part of what's hurting Eureka Springs. Introducing new is a positive thing. This is a shopping event intended to serve as a signature event that is held at the latter end of the shopping season, that sends the message to all of our advertising, Eureka Springs is open for Christmas, and we all get to see the benefit of that. There's a few things I'm gonna have to clarify, and I hope I get a little bit extended time as there was two folks to, to talk, but we did have a community meeting, we followed the process. We met with the department heads, I met with the police chief, okay? Okay? I called the fire department. So when that email is out, I personally did that. I'm the board chair, and I think our organization should get credit for that. So I met with Thomas, and he verified that. We held, they had a department head meeting. It's unfair, by the way, to put Butch under the fire on this. We put the pressure on Butch. Okay? So he's catching a lot of heat, but he was trying to represent our party, and I want the record to show that. There was a department head meeting. We engaged Caddywampus. We're under contract. There will be music on the street, mom and pop. There'll also be Santa on the street, because that's what events like this do. The market is not on 12/2 and 12/9. It is only on 12/9. Every bit of information that was ever out there just said 12/9. From the work, yes, it did.
I've got a copy that says 2.
Okay. I don't know about that, but I'll be happy to look at it.
Okay.
Caddywampus will have a market. They are a professional organization. So they may have a market in Fayetteville on 12/2, but they'll also have a market here on 12/9. It is an effort to restart competitiveness. I get it, everybody doesn't agree. You're not gonna get 100% agreement. It's just not possible. Okay? But I believe that this can work. Ask yourself, 4:00 PM on a December evening, 4:00 PM, now say 7, 8, 9, is there a lot of shopping going on during that period? No, but there could be, because we're at the primary peak of where people are buying Christmas shopping gifts. And Eureka Springs now is giving them another reason to come to Eureka Springs during that timeframe. You asked when the, when the roads will close? Okay? And I think that there should be clarity there. It is under the direction of Thomas Acor. He has the ability to shut it as early as 2:00 PM and as late as 3:00 PM, based on his discretion. So it may be open later. There will be drive-through traffic that will go through, and we will have a space. Most importantly, I really ask that you guys honor the process. A permit was filed. The department heads reviewed and vetted the, they issued a permit. There was a concern that was raised legitimately by people like Mel. The mayor said, "Let us review this process." Main Street went out onto the street and walked the streets and got overwhelming support for it. The mayor then called us back in. We went through the procedure, and then the mayor asked that there would be a full review after this event. So, thank you. I'm available for questions.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Oh, we have more public than...
Yeah.
All right. Last year, December 6th, Telluride has its Noel night. What makes it a success? No booths, no tents in front of the shops. There is no street closures. It's a town very similar to Eureka in size. You, Ray, Colorado, the same, they have a Noel night. The idea is, once again, is to get people into the shops. Putting anything out from the shops to distract the people will not work. It will take business away from the shops. What will help is keeping them open at night. One of the biggest complaints, of course, is that the shop owners close at 6:00 and people can't shop. Weekends, the town is packed on weekends. What is the biggest problem on the weekends in Eureka? Ask Mr. DeVito. No parking. Where's the park, where are these people gonna park that are gonna come in here once you've closed the streets? You're gonna take parking spots away. This is a bad business plan. Brick and mortar is hurting everyone, even where the millionaires sold out the billionaires in Telluride. Speak to the shop owners there. They are hurting. But if you wanna have elbow-to-elbow people in the shops, what you need is, as I pointed out before, they came up with a great business plan. They give away free finger food, soft drinks, and they have a little gambling aspect to it. They put little bowls out there with slips of paper in it. And when you go up to the cash register with the items you pick out from the stores, you reach in, you pick out a slip of paper, and it tells you what your discounts are. And of course, one of the big advertising promotions is, it's a night of deep discounts to help the shop owners. Weekends are full everywhere. That's why they have it in both, in most mountain towns, midweek, to bring the people into town when they normally wouldn't be there. And I don't have any dog in this fight, you know what I'm saying? But I'm just telling you what I've observed. You go down to Fort Lauderdale, the main business street there, which is not a shopping mall, it's Las Olas Boulevard. Can you believe even there, surrounded by million-dollar homes and the richest people on the face of the earth, the shop owners are hurting there, too. When they have their, you know, art shows down there, which have world-class art in there, they have jewelry events there where they only invite the top 200 people to put their booths, it doesn't help the shop owners one bit. And that's why now they're having a big to-do about how to revitalize what used to be a glitzy shopping area in the middle of Las Olas. It's gone. Brick and mortar needs your help. They don't need competition from people coming from the outside to take business away from these poor shop owners, whereas they said, the idea of paying $120 to put up a booth in front of your shop is insane. That's all I have to say.
I'm gonna address a couple of points that have been brought up as well. One of my favorite sayings about myself is, "I'm fat, I'm not stupid." And when you peel away the veneer of this whole event, you can see what's going on. The people who have planned this either have in the past, or are currently, been on the chamber or the CAPC board. Again, retail has never gotten a voice on either one of those. Sure, we want 1,000 peoples to come in, because if we trap them here at night, they can stay at the basin. "Oh, who's the manager?" Well, the chairperson of Main Street. He's also on other boards. So it's all self-interest. This has nothing to do with retail. This is a sideline. "We're gonna do this." You wanna make this a signature thing for Eureka? You wanna make this a signature event for Eureka? Then come up with your own damn signature. Quit using everybody else's. We're gonna copy another event from another town because another organization told them that's what's hot? You know, I mean, come on, guys. This is not fair to local retail. I have a shop on Main Street. My address is actually on the street that this organization is named after. In three years, not a soul from this organization has stepped foot into my shop in an official None of the shops on North Main through this fiasco have been surveyed, asked to participate. The invitation wasn't even extended. "Hey, you know, we know you're done here on the wrong side of the tracks," where nobody cares, because there's nothing down here. "But if you wanna spend $120, we'll reserve a space for you." None of us were even asked to participate. So then you wanna tell me this is about community and building community, when you're only representing a small, narrow portion of community? That's wrong. That's not how you do business. That's not how you generate support. And then when you have your community meeting about this, "We're gonna do it on a Thursday at 9:00 AM to discuss business building so everybody can close their businesses to come to a business meeting." Now, can we, what kind of stupidity is that? Had I gone to that business meeting that was a half a block away from my shop, I would've lost $150. Because at 8:45 in the morning, on a lot of given mornings, I've got people lined up outside my shop to get haircuts before they go to work. And I'm supposed to lose that money and upset those clients so I can go to a business meeting during business hours from an organization that's about generating business? So I just don't understand how that kind of mindset can even be taken seriously when it comes to developing an event like this, and then get support behind closed doors without letting the people who are footing the bill, paying the taxes, paying for the business licenses, paying for the inspections. We're footing the bill. A 501(c)(3), they ain't paying the taxes. The retailers are. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jan.
I'm Jan. I've been here, I've been here 20 years. We've been here 20 years. All I wanted to say is, the reason there's not a lot more merchants here tonight is because they already feel defeated, because they were like, last ones invited to the party, and the party's gonna go on without them. And that's just not right. It's not fair. And that's why we don't have more merchants here tonight. But as you see on the petition, there's a whole bunch of us. The other thing is, I ask, please, take back the power and give it back to the people, council, please. That's what we really would like, is to be represented fairly. I think that what this is, is a foot in the door. I don't look for this to go away. Didn't go, and we thought it went away four years ago, we thought, and the merchants won. But, you know, I think that this gentleman and this network, whatever it is, this is just a foot in the door. And we've gotta be prepared to have representation of the people. So please, that's what I ask council, is please, give us that. Thank you, Big Tom.
Anyone else? David?
You know, this whole thing, and I was here four years ago when Morris Pate was having discussion about some kind of festival. And I remember, and I remember the merchants being volatile then, very upset, totally understand it. Business is rough. You look at the statistics this year alone, with internet sales escalating and retail sales not, malls closed, I mean, it's a bad business. It's rough. I'm on the CAPC, and we only collect taxes from restaurants and lodging, and you can see a lot of day trippers, and you look at all the stuff. And so you see people in town looking around, trying to reinvent or come up with new ideas, new things, an attempt to break the mold of old, to seek out ways to present the city in the best light possible, and an attempt to bring in yes. We're a tourist town. Started as one, is one now, and will always be one. We're not gonna have anything else but tourists. We're certainly not gonna have big industry here. So when you're looking at tourists and people to come in, you really wanna try and look around at the best ideas. Bob Janowski brought up the Noel. That's an excellent idea. It's not gonna help us this year by any means, but it should be brought up in that Christmas group that'll be working on next year. It's a great idea. Absolutely. There's nothing wrong with it. There's really not much that we've heard tonight that's gonna help this year, because guess what? It's kind of already in place. And so it's probably going to go ahead. The mayor got the best I can tell. He got feedback from his department heads. He received other feedback from Main Street. He evaluated the situation. And he did what he has the authority to do, because back four years ago, when the discussion came up with Morris Pate, the attorney there said that the mayor has the authority, final authority, to close the street. The mayor also has that basis, because he assesses and gets feedback from department heads, the police chief, the fire chief. So everything was followed. Now, the outcome may not be great. Obviously, this petition shows that. But guess what? We're in the, we're in the middle of a situation here now, where I just don't think it's possible to stop what's going on. So this year's probably going to be an opportunity to test the approach that has been laid out.
Thank you.
One of the things that may be getting overlooked is who we are. What is our business? Our only business is tourism. That means people come here to eat, to sleep, to shop. We're not like any other town in the country. Thank goodness, we are our own unique little self. We don't need to do anything that anybody else is doing. We do our own thing. We are known for our own thing. We are known for being our own little Victorian quirky village that has no neon, and so on and so forth. People who have been here before know parkings are problems. They've learned to take trolleys. If you want an event to happen, what you have to look at, number one, are the merchants. They are your number one concern. Every person sitting here at this council table, your number one concern is the city, which is who? The merchants. Without the merchants, and that includes artists and woodworkers and shopkeepers, anybody who is dealing, and the food and the lodging, anybody who's dealing with tourism, that's your number one concern. That is number one. All you need to remember, which was obviously painfully overlooked this time, was you talk to the merchants. You talk to them from day one. You talk to them before you talk to the department heads. You talk to the people who keep this town functioning. And Jack, not against you, but your hotel has nothing to do with being hurt by having some vendor sitting in front of it. Whereas Mel's shop would. My shop across the street would. One of the other problems that came up, and I touched on it before when I said merchants all over, except for that two-block area where it's north, was Main Street. And Camden brought that up very nicely. And to expand, I got calls from merchants on Main Street saying, "Why were we not notified? Why were we not included?" This whole town is based on tourism, which means it's based on merchants. And like I said, whatever kind that is, food, lodging, our t-shirts, it doesn't matter. If you deal with tourism, that's what keeps this town functioning. When you shut them out at any point, you're screwing this town. That's exactly what it comes down to, and it's gotta stop. And I thoroughly agree, because Morris Pate, as much as I love him, and I owe him my son's life, that's how dear to me he is, without understanding the tourism aspect was going to shut down Spring Street for all of Memorial Weekend, because he didn't get it. We end up having a town hall meeting, which was awesome. He got it. We can't have our streets being shut down unless it's, I'm gonna say, 75% approval, whatever. Point being, this should be a situation that council decides based on input from the community and all levels of the community. We have got to think of them first, or our town is dead. That's what's gonna happen. So keep that in mind, everybody at this table.
Point of information. Point of information.
What, go ahead.
The meeting that took place, 3/25/13, I was asked to go back and review, which I did today. It may be someone's memory that the mayor, that the city attorney said the mayor may close the street. That is, that is not reflected on the tape. That is not reflected in the minutes. There was a discussion wherein right to close the street was covered, and one of the last, I think I handed a copy of the minutes to a couple of those folks who have it behind you, David. And interestingly, at the end, toward the end of that very extensive discussion, you made it a point that it wasn't clear, and until it was made clear. I mean, you can look at that, and I can tell you, I have notes on where that is, if you want to actually... want to actually review the meeting itself and see what was said and what is memory. End result, those folks moved their plan to another location that was more suitable. So, anyway, that's the point of information. Thank you.
David? I don't see my name anywhere here in the minutes or anything that you said in these minutes.
Well...
All that you just said, I don't find in here.
Your closing comment...
All right. Let's...
...was made, and I can tell you where it is.
Point. I don't think what happened several years ago is relevant at this point.
Well, to say that...
Christie's got the floor, go ahead.
No, I just don't understand how discussing what happened at that meeting is relevant right now.
Okay.
Thanks.
Further discussion?
Just the fact that, I think it's a general understanding, and maybe Tim can find it for us, that the mayor is the sole authority on closing streets for any event. We need to have that looked into, because I can remember it both ways. That it was for emergency situations, and that it could also be for this. So if we can find it, that would help clarify that part.
Mr. McClan?
Well, you know, and that'd be great, because I was kind of, I had the understanding that the mayor had that authority too, but, so, you know, I'd like to ask Mr. Weaver if that's the case. If did we do something wrong? Did the mayor do something wrong?
I am not aware of anything that the mayor has done improperly. As far as closing the streets temporarily, that is typically an executive power.
Further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I called him and asked him that question, and you were a little not so sure in our conversation. Where is that found, that that's an executive power?
It would go back to several roots in the common law. It would also, I think, go back to the fact that the street department is part of the executive branch, but the common law goes to the police powers. The police powers are all executive powers, they're not legislative powers. If you wanna close a street permanently, the mayor probably can't do that without your approval, if you wanna leave it open. Or if you wanna open a street and the mayor doesn't want it open, because that goes back to your ability to control the real estate of the city. But for a temporary shutdown, if there's a fire, mayors have always had the power to shut down a street for that. If there's a flood, if there's any other kind of police emergency, if there's any kind of thing, so that would be the beginning of the executive power to do that. You don't call out the legislature to vote when a sewer overflows. Now, this is not a sewer overflowing, but it's also a very temporary shutdown of a street. And that goes to the parade powers, which also rest in the mayor's office as an executive branch. You don't call out typically the legislature to vote when someone is going to ask for a parade permit. Each time they ask for a parade permit, they go down to City Hall, they fill out the proper paperwork, it runs through the committees, or through the heads of the department, it runs through the executive branch. As I said, if you're gonna close it down for days on end, then you probably need to be consulted. But if it's very short, and if you want it in black and white, I can't produce it to you in black and white. But we could, I assume, Attorney General to opine on that in about six months.
Mickey?
What I would like to suggest is that this street closing thing, that we come up with our own city ordinance, whatever, basically stating anything over one hour, because we don't have a single parade that lasts more than an hour. Our anti-car parade's close, it's about 45 minutes. But if we do our own ordinance, or make our own, however, wherever we would have to put it, anything over an hour has to be okayed through council. Anything under than that is demerited, you know, for a parade. It's not a big deal. But for an event, or if you wanted to do it the other way, and say any event that's gonna last more than four hours, or more than three hours with the street being closed, you know, it could be worked out that way, but something has to be done to protect the merchants and therefore this town. With the street closing at 2:00, this whole thing starting at 2:00, from past experience, they're gonna have to close down the streets at noon. That's another two hours, so no parking and no business. This can be really, really horrific.
Mr. Mitchell?
I still don't see an outcome that the merchants are gonna be happy with for December 9th. I still see...
It's a mess.
It's going on, and I still see it going on. And all the other discussion about moving into the executive powers of the mayor and everything are troublesome to me, but I understand it. I listened to the attorney just then, and that discussion in that way was still expressed at that meeting. Minutes may not have proved it, we've discussed issues with minutes in the past, I'm not going there, but...
Do you want to look at the meeting?
But I still think that this has been set up, and it's been arranged, and it's too late to modify it.
Further discussion?
Ken, you move...
Mr. McClan?
I, you know, I don't wanna be trying to do something to block what the mayor's done and can't. But I think the mayor understands the gravity of the situation, and so I think it may be something that he may have to establish his own policy on these kind of things, and set a criteria that, in his office, that would have to be met in the future, that would be, you know, well, before I'll sign anything off on anything, you know, I wanna see a show of hands, you know, a list of those that are in favor, and, I mean, I think this has been a hard lesson, learned on the learning curve for him as well.
We've been discussing that about on the applications.
You know, it's...
Don't wait any help.
So, I mean, it's, I'm sorry, it's his call, it's not ours. I hate it, but, I mean, you know, but that's just...
I just, could I ask Mr. Moore one question?
Okay.
Would it be possible to cut the showers of this thing? I'm sorry. Would it be possible to cut, shorten the hours on this?
I don't think so, and the reason for that. Remember, this is the signature event of the Christmas season. There's been thousands of dollars in advertising that has been unified, because all of the groups are working together. It's a little troublesome to hear the defamation of the Chamber and CAPC. These are the groups that are delivering results for this community, and this is a great example of it. Parks, the city, the mayor, the CAPC, the Chamber, and Main Street, all working together to deliver the Christmas season and build the Christmas season. I'm sure that that's what we've been asking for all along. Let's all work together for a common goal. I understand where you're coming from, Mickey, and I understand where the retailers are coming from, but please know, this isn't all the retailers, okay? There is a difference of opinion. The mayor has asked that Main Street survey, or maybe you wanna independently survey after the event to see what the outcome is, to see if it's something that you wanna do. But please don't think it's all the retailers, that's not our experience.
All right, that...
In answer to your question.
We're getting off the subject there. Any further discussion? All right, get a motion to, to be known, let's go on to our new business. Get a motion to discuss, discussion issues with Transit Booking Group Tours?
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Mr. Mitchell? All right. David?
Sir?
You wanna lead off? I think you had a...
It was, yes, this was the discussion about the current ordinance that prohibits, or dictates how transit can handle bookings that could be directed directly to them, so that they keep them and not have to, not have to split with the current arrangement. So what I was hoping is that council would give some consideration for our current transit department to be able to book their own tours, separate, and change that ordinance a little bit. That was, and I was hoping that council would give that some consideration for our transit department.
Would that booking also occur through the CAPC?
Not necessarily, no. We have, I talked with Marty, my office manager, who answers most of the phones, we've had 20 to 25 groups call us directly.
Okay.
And if they're a few weeks out, we refer them to the franchise. If they wanna come tomorrow, we say, yeah, this is how much, come on. And they're restricted, but they do walk up, the 1:00, 3:00 tour, which are individual tours, they can't schedule an off time. Only a franchise can schedule an off time with a group.
Well, do you want the power to work with the CAPC as well?
I would like to book groups of my own. I don't know about the CAPC, but...
CAPC, they don't, they're not in a retail location.
They're not.
They're not, they're not out there.
They do say advertising, I don't know how to work with two of them. But I see groups come into town who don't get to see our loop, because they have to go through a franchise, and they don't want to. They just wanna come to town and see the loop. Now, I think I sent each of you an email with proposed ordinance, basically line taken out, that says I have to refer to Joe. And like I said in the email, I won't promote groups, because I think that crosses the line with my federal funding, if I were to start promoting for groups. I wanna provide step-on service, because I don't want to provide step-on service. That's where they get on the bus and go all around, everywhere except the loop that they can't go on.
Mr. Weaver?
Before you get too interested, this is a franchise. A franchise is a contract you just renewed. Before you make changes to that, you need to consult with your franchisee, see what he is willing to concede. Or you need to make these changes so that they become effective on the next renewal.
You're probably right on that, yeah.
You said a couple weeks ago that it really wasn't a matter of money, so why couldn't it be written so that when you booked a group, you'd give 35% of the money to the franchise guy?
Well, he's not spending any resources toward that group. The arrangement we have now is when he brings a group to town, he's taking his time, his promotion money to bring that group to town, he gets the larger split. At the individual tour times, he provides the guide, either himself, or he hired, Joe hired, usually hires a guide for that. So he's expending resources on that also. If I could book my own groups, I would use my own guides.
See, a group calls you and they wanna do something, and you say, here's the guy to call to do that, and they say, oh, well, forget it, we don't wanna call him. Why does that happen like that?
I don't know. We've also had, I know, two groups that we referred to Joe, and a month later they call us back and say, he never called us.
Yeah, that's a different problem, yeah.
That's a different problem.
Yeah.
But like I said, I know, talking to Karen Pryor, there are groups that come to town that don't get to see our loop, because their vehicle's too big. You know, and like I said, it's not about money, it's gonna cost me money to do this if council allows it. So we need to, that's basically my concern. I want more groups to be able to see what's most unique about this town, and that's the historic loop. Which when they come to town and their vehicle's too big, by ordinance, they can't see.
David?
Well, based on the attorney then, since we entered a contract, now, Snitty showed us an ordinance, but you say we have a contract that actually precludes that we really couldn't change the ordinance to meet what Snitty asked for, because the contract is in effect, and so we'd have to wait two years for the next contract? Is that what I heard?
Or get agreement from your... I thought he would be here tonight, but I guess not.
So there's really no action for us at this time, other than maybe Snitty talks to Joe to see, and then comes back to us? And that's about it?
I would suggest that would be an appropriate avenue, and then if he says no, and you still wanna make a change, your transit director can come back and tell you, I'd like to make a change, and you can consider whether it's worth potentially getting sued, or whether you wanna make the change so that it becomes active in...
Two years.
Two years?
Okay.
So, we don't have to do anything then, huh?
That's the point. Any further, Mr. McClan?
The only thing, and I'd like to have an idea of what kind of dollars and cents potentially it is, you know, some kind of, you know, if it's, like you talked about before, it's not about the money, and I understand that, you know, it's the service, and maybe it's, we gotta pump Joe a little bit to be a little more responsive.
The individual tours that we book, individuals who want to ride the tram, this year grossed a little over $140,000. Joe goes, it's 35% of that. When Joe brings a group to town, we get 60% of the published group rate, which is $14 a person. So it's $9 we get. Last I looked, Joe actually paid us just over $7,000. What we paid Joe, I don't know, I can do the math real quick, but more than that. Now, his expenses are his guides and whatever promotion that he does. My expenses are fuel, drivers, maintenance, and we purchased a tram, which was still paying for. So it has expense. And the trams are good for us, because that provides the match obligation we need for the federal funding that we get. And it's tram tours that helps transit not come to the city for money when I'm short.
It might be good in this two-year period that you and Joe get together and say, hey, look, you know, we need to work out a more equitable deal.
Right.
Or I'm gonna search something else too. You know, and like he said, he may buy his own buses and do his own thing if you get in, you know, in the business separately from him, or with him, or, you know, partially. I mean, I really don't understand how it's gonna work.
Right.
But that would, but it would make a franchise be a business that's self-contained and not doing business with the city or with the transit as a partnership, which is what you have now.
Right, basically, yes.
And so that's, you know, that's something to be considered, you know.
Right. These are city, the ordinance basically says, hey, private organization can use city property. That's basically what the ordinance is, and we make agreement with them too.
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, you and Joe get along well enough that you guys could sit down and maybe hammer something out that might even be more factual to both parties.
Right. In my concern are groups, I want to see more groups come to town.
Sure.
And be able to see our loop. And I think the large vehicle ordinance should stay in place, because you haven't noticed, these buses are getting bigger.
Yeah, no, you're right, it needs to stay in place.
And we need to keep that.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Could we take a break?
No. Oh, that's okay.
We're moved to make a five-minute, are you still on this topic?
No, no, it was something else.
Then I would like to make a motion, take a five-minute break.
I'll second it.
I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay.
That we also look at this agenda and see if some of this stuff could be postponed?
I'm gonna postpone mine.
So is it, I mean, could we also do that? I mean, you know, let's be honest, though.
Let's do one or the other, when we get back, we can do that, okay?
Okay.
I vote in favor of taking a five-minute recess, say five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
They said they say five aye.
Say five.
I can get my sleeping bag. I can get my sleeping bag.
What was just taken, what was your vote?
Yeah, I think-
Well, I did vote yes.
Nine hours. Everybody got their microphones back on? All right. Meeting called back to order. Uh, Mickey, I think you wanted to have something.
Oh, well, in view of the lateness of the hour, number four discussion, the food truck, I'd like to put it off until the very next meeting, please.
Could we also consider number two possibly, and move that to the next meeting?
It's already postponed, sorry.
Oh, it was?
Oh, okay.
It's already what?
Number two was postponed.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, I meant to tell you before the meeting.
Oh.
But, Mr. Weaver postponed it, I didn't relay it.
Oh, okay, well, we'll do number two.
Fifty, I didn't have that authority to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, for your separate authority here.
What other, just two and four, anybody, anything else?
No, I didn't.
Uh, do we, well, I guess three or about that.
Everything, yeah, everything's-
Three's not essential right now either.
Could we move it?
Yeah.
And do we need, uh-
And what about seven? Is that necessary right now?
It'll take two minutes for that.
Okay.
Okay. We'll suffer through that.
Resolution, then the other tier of the resolution, so, uh, all right, I've got a motion to defer items two, three, and four to the next meeting.
All right, so moved.
Aye.
All right, Terry seconded.
I think you voted.
Steve, in all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, brings us to a motion to discuss resolution for parking lot lease.
So moved.
Second.
All right. This is our standard lease that we do every year. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we, we, uh, sign this ordinance, no, no, it's the resolution. Uh, sign this resolution, the number, and read it for passage.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Clerk's looking for a roll call.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. McClung?
Yep.
Ms. Snyder?
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Watch your- A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas to negotiate and execute a parking lot lease agreement at the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lot by and between county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy, date resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lot by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy, whereby said city agrees to lease the following described property. The existing parking lots immediately surrounding and adjacent to the Carroll County Western District Courthouse located at forty-four South Main, Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Such parking lots presently occupying the property directly northeast, south, and south of said courthouse, endowed by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, First Street, and curbs respectively, for a term of one year commencing on January one, twenty eighteen, and ending on midnight, December thirty-one, twenty eighteen.
All right. We, uh, get a motion for, um, item six, resolution for city hall office space lease.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to sign this, uh, resolution, and now we're going to read it for passage.
Second.
Mickey seconded?
Yep.
Good. Yep.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. McClung?
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Uh, zero, the resolution number will be seven-two-zero. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute a lease agreement by and between county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy, date resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement by and between Carroll County Judge of Carroll County, the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy, whereby said city agrees to lease two thousand sixty-two square feet of floor space for office purposes on the lowest level of the Western District Carroll County Courthouse located at forty-four South Main Street in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for an annual term of up to three years commencing on January one, twenty eighteen, and subject to renewal annually, no later than January fifteenth of that year, and thereafter as the parties may agree.
For an initial, annual term, not initial, is that the annual term?
Oh, thank you, and for an initial term.
Okay. Um, all right, that brings us to the final, get a motion to discuss the financial review.
Second.
After our workshop, and I think, again, congratulations need to go out to all the department heads and, and for paying a lot of good attention to their budgets. Our expenses were actually under our revenue, well, at seventy-four percent, well, at seventy-four point eight percent, expenses, and our revenue was seventy-seven point seven percent, which shows us approximately four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in the black, which is the good news. Our sewer is still showing wed, and mainly because of the electrical, well, I say electrical, the utility cost is approximately eleven percent more than, than what we had anticipated, and that's, once we were taking that out, then the sewer bill would be in, in pretty good shape. And other than that, our fiscal year, we're in, should be eighty-three percent of, of our budget's complete, so our revenue's still not up there, we're about five percent down, uh, and, but our expenses are also way down, too. They're almost ten percent, nine percent down, so we're doing a good job, and that's not only the department heads, but the council, too, so, anyway, that's all I have on that. Any questions? Uh, that brings us to agenda setting. Mr. McClung?
Uh, I would like to put on the agenda for the next meeting, if, if we have time, uh, the possi, the possibility of discontinuing the, the, the video, whatever you want to call it, showing the video on YouTube as well as the, as the city channel.
Broadcasting live?
Yes, right.
Broadcasting over?
Right.
Okay.
Because it's just, it's the cost of transcribing for the, for the closed captioning, it's just, it's expensive.
Do I get a second?
Classification, do you mean broadcasting live or all broadcast?
Well, we're not broadcasting live now.
All broadcast.
Yeah, we're not even doing it live now, so.
Okay, so, second.
Okay. Uh, any other? Mickey?
Um, I'd like to add a discussion and have maybe the city attorney look into, I'd like to have a discussion in regards to what we talked about on closing of street events, so we can come up with a guideline that everybody, including the merchants, could be happy with.
Closing of street events?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, we can have a guideline.
Mickey, that's, I, that's something that we're working with in our office right now already for the events and putting on our, as part of the event application. Again, I'm not sure, and I think what you may be wanting is the clarification from the city attorney, whether or not that's an executive or legislative act.
No, what I want is for all the merchants to be notified in a timely manner like they asked, and we know if we had to write up a guideline or not.
I don't think that's council, I think that's something I, I need to do, which is what I was saying, it's what I'm in the process of doing.
Okay. Thank you for this update, I appreciate it.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Uh, mayor's comments, uh, well, that's part of it.
City council comments.
Oh, city council, I'm sorry. I wanted to skip over that, I'm sorry. I don't know why.
I don't want to hear it.
Okay, David?
Uh, no, the only thing I have to say is I hope and feverently pray that December nine is one of the best damn shopping nights in the history of this town.
Me, too.
No comment.
Well, I'd just like to say, I'm, I am really disappointed that a city council person could speak up one night and say, I'm not on top of things, I'm confused, I voted erroneously, I'd like to fix it, and you guys would vote to deny him that right. It puts the process, it puts the end, makes the end much more important than the process, and I happen to believe process is very, very important, and I just was very disappointed.
Mickey?
I'm sorry.
Too late now.
Um, no, I was going to say, Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas. Getting it in now, that's it.
Mr. McClung?
No comment.
All right.
Good mischief.
We have a lot of activities coming up in December. We've got the, December first, the annual Christmas parade of lights at six P.M., starting from the library and going down Spring Street. On the second, we'll have Santa in the park from one to three in the Basin Park. Also on the second, we'll have the thirty-fifth annual tour of homes, wow, thirty-five years, from three to eight, and you can check out their website at eureka springs preservation society dot org and get a list of homes that are going to be on tour. Also, the second, that evening, at seven P.M., we'll have John Teohawks doing his Christmas special. And then on the seventh of December, will be the fifty-first annual Silver Tea from one-thirty to three-thirty in the Crescent Hotel Crystal Dining Room. Also, on the ninth, will be Santa in Basin Park from one to three, and then the same night, we'll have the downtown night market, Living Windows, from four to nine, and also on that same night, we'll have the Night of a Thousand Santas from five to eleven from Basin Park and various locations around town, and starting at seven-thirty, that same night, we'll have the Ozark Corral Holiday Concert at the Auditorium. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
I have one question. Don't we have a workshop on December fifth? Isn't that correct?
Yes, we do have a workshop on December fifth.
At three?
Three P.M.
Will that be right here? Okay.
Yep, and that'd be on the ADA, uh, review.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, I think everybody should have a copy, or you'll be-
You will have.
You will have, so, be your-
Glad you brought it up.
Three P.M.
Motion to a jury.
Second.
All in favor?